Oh, it's on the street.
How are you? Great. Six oh four will call our meeting. And. We need to amend our agenda because this got set to the wrong person is Leanne Wright. She's gonna be here. We just have her at six thirty. I think that's fine. Everybody okay with that? Had her at six thirty. Okay, so the first thing on the agenda is Mary. Oh, there she is.
Been here the whole time.
No, I meant Leanne.
Say when you're ready. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so Rowing has been at our offices time and time and time again trying to get our computers to work and talk to each other and do what they're supposed to do. And they have said that the problem with them is they're over seven years old and they need to be replaced. And so they've got, I understand that there's a program where we're going to start replacing them on a regular basis. But we are not first in line, which is fine. But I have enough money in my budget that I asked Rowing if they would put together an estimate for me and if the commissioners would pay to have them installed because they're the ones that can hold Rowing accountable to get the work done. That I have money I can move around in my budget. I'm down in transfers. That's what that transfer is for. To replace those seven and a half year old computers that the county got for free. And let me say, I'm giving Judge Coker credit for that. She worked with the Office of Court Services downstate. Before I was ever judged, then those got installed. So she gets credit for getting us new one seven and a half years ago. And so I'm just asking you to approve that. Estimate that Rowing has provided. I've asked for a little more than what that estimate is because if we have to update programs. That's not in anybody's budget anywhere. And so if I have a little. And I'm not asking for new money. I'm just transferring money around. And so I'm just asking for approval. For their estimate.
It's ten thousand four hundred ninety-three hours.
And I'm asking to transfer twelve if we don't spend it. You get it back anyway.
I'll make the motion to approve for transfer. I'll second.
I got a a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion. We'll vote. All those in favor, sign the fire or raise your hand.
Thank you all.
Motion carried. You guys all vote yes, right? Yeah. See, you vote yes. She's muted. Yeah, motion carried. Okay, what else we got there? Natasha. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, council. I come before you today to discuss some merit raises. We have quite a few individuals. Who have come to us within the last year with a lot of experience. We have added sixty-seven years of full-time experience to our service. That is one paramedic with thirty-two years of experience, one paramedic with sixteen years of experience, and one EMT with nineteen years of experience. I would like to propose that their years of service be adjusted. I cannot give them the full time that they have served. However, I'm asking for half of the time. I think they deserve it. I know it's a case-by-case basis. I did include the matrix for our department and you will see there's three pages with the personnel. Pictures of them with their families, their experience, and what it would cost to change each into the next level of service years. AJ probably recognizes. The majority of these faces. I know that he's worked a lot of calls with these providers. Recently, one of them was awarded a cardiac save award came before this board last month. So. Just came to discuss it and hopefully we can give them some additional years of service.
I don't know what the council wishes are, but I can't look at it. So I don't know if you guys want to just table it or.
I got a question here.
Go ahead.
Are these are these normal, the normal. Raises that we give for people's longevity or are these different from them?
So it would be similar to the lateral transfers that the sheriff's department has brought forward. I was told they had to be a case-by-case basis. So at this point, these are all relatively new hires within the last year. So I'd like to see that their service is adjusted at least to half of the time that they've served within EMS. We gained a lot of experience from them. They're great providers.
How how much does this adjust your budget? Is your money in is your money in the. In the salaries to be able to accommodate this or does it need an adjustment?
It may need an adjustment. We're gonna roll almost a hundred thousand dollars over into the general fund for next year. This would be an increase of fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. It seems like a lot, but I I can't train these individuals.
No, I was gonna say I've always been.
Every year forward.
I've always been in agreement and always thought it was a fan of if we can. Bring people in that that can show years of service or show that they've got training that puts them right on the front lines immediately. You know, supporting that. We've done it like hey with the sheriff's department and other departments. So I, from my understanding, these. Have documented proof of their training, documented proof of their years of service that that they're bringing with them, of course, right?
Correct. This is all available on Akatus, which is the state database for the certifications. I made sure to look up everyone before I attended this meeting today. All dates are accurate to their service experience. As well as additional certifications. Many of them have certifications that I do not myself have, including hazmat and fire certifications. So they bring a lot to the table that I'm not able to offer myself.
Yes, and we we've always before, if I remember right, from the sheriff's department when we do this, you know, they get they get the pay. They can get the pay rate, but their years of service still with the county are at the rate. So benefits or things of that nature. Don't. Adjust to the necessarily to the pay rate because that's your service with us.
Is that in accordance with like PTO?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the three individuals for the pay raise.
I've got one more question.
Sure.
Is this gonna start anywhere first then?
Yes.
I'll second the motion. Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion. We'll vote. All of the favorite, raise your hand. Any opposed, raise your hand. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nathan, you're next.
Lou, again, I am appearing before you in this session. To request that the council approve funding the development of a new Plaski County Comprehensive Plan. Few meetings back, the Board of Commissioners authorized me to distribute this, an RFP, which you all received in your email last week. To consultants and otherwise to public this opportunity, publicize this opportunity pending council approval for financing the project. Our current plan is going on seventeen years old. The world and the community have changed a lot since two thousand and nine, and there are plenty of arguments to be made about how wealth changes to our ordinance. What we've allowed to take place have or have not aligned with the old plan. We've updated things like our economic development strategic plan without the guidance of a fresh comp plan. And given limited staffing in my office and building, planning and zoning, it's fair to say we've not always had the resources to keep up with what I think is now a kind of a stale plan. Finally, as we continue to see revenues coming in from solar project economic development payments, the council would benefit from having a new plan and all that it would outline for the county's future. In developing a framework for allocating these funds. As you may recall, President Titi, Vice President Hazimi, Commissioner Kniebel, our building inspector, and I interviewed two firms for this project earlier this year. In the very brief window between that point and when the commissioners formally had to select the preferred firm. We had some unexpected issues relating to their anticipated project costs as compared to the local match amount that had been authorized by the commissioners in their resolution and the maximum grant amount. We had to drop the project at the time and for reasons ultimately related to the desperately needed new fire station in Madera Ville. We are currently unable to apply for grant funding for this. So this is a project that if we are going to proceed, needs to be funded by the county. Most likely with either solar project funds, my budget, or a combination of the two, although these aren't not the only potential sources. It's hard to say exactly how much will this will cost. The state granted maximum is somewhere around sixty thousand dollars. Our executive director down at Kirksey has expressed to me that he thinks that is too low. He didn't necessarily. Suggest what the state should adjust it to, but thought sixty is not enough to cover a truly comprehensive, comprehensive plan in two thousand and twenty-five. The preferred firm we had ten intended to select had three price points ranging from eighty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. But we're also sending a much more robust RFP if this goes forward that will let the consultants who are interested fine tune the details better. And I'm up to a list of about thirteen firms so that we're gonna have a diverse pool of potential applicants. Additionally, as you may have noticed in the incomplete yellow highlighted section toward the bottom of the RFP draft that I sent to you. I'll be asking applicants to break down their costs and to provide different alternatives with various pricing options. So that we would have the flexibility in accounting for cost proposals when we evaluate the interested firms. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Well, I I think it's something that needs to be done. I mean, me and Mike were commissioners way back in oh nine when this was done. I remember when we did the first one. And it's hard to believe that we haven't updated it in, you know, that many years. So I think it's, you know, it's very important. The only thing that I would say is is I'm once again hesitant to use the word, you know, economic development payments that we've received because we haven't put any real. Plan in place for how them dollars are to be used, not saying that if we paid for it out of, let's say. The CDC budget that we. After we put the plan in place for the the solar dollars, we couldn't reimburse that money back. But. Like I said, I would, at this point, like to. Fund it from something other than solar money, even though I know we have a resolution giving the council authority to spend the money. I still think we don't have a real good. Plan as to what all that money is going to be used for and how it's gonna be, excuse me, be used.
Maybe on a rainy day, we could get some out of there. Do a combination of, I mean, it's up there, probably here.
Exactly.
Yeah. How much you how much you got playing around?
So. If if it were to be paid out of either in full or primarily out of my budget for next year, it would come out of the. Professional services line item. I think I have just more than one hundred thousand dollars there. Obviously, we do not wanna. Blow out my entire line item and have to, but I could probably commit, we'll say, depending whether like fifty percent of it out of my twenty twenty-six budget. If the council then wanted to look at solar money rainy day or a combination for the other fifty percent.
Yeah, I I would be good with, you know, if Nathan believes that he has the fund to get fifty percent, do fifty percent out of. Out of CDC's fund and then do fifty percent out of rainy day at this point in time. And like I said, you know. I would like to believe that in the next twelve months, we will have a good plan put together for. Solar revenue or the EDA payments and, you know, then possibly we would pay that money back. I'm not saying we wouldn't. That's always an option, but. At this point, I think that would be the best, the best scenario. So I'm I'm willing to make a motion to move forward with the. Presenting the RFQ, getting bids and.
And can I interrupt you before you finish that? Do you wanna set? A cost cap on that? So when we're evaluating or even when I send out an RFP, they know in advance that. They need to come in under one oh five or one seventeen or ninety-three or whatever.
Right. I guess I'm gonna I'm gonna ask the question this way, Nathan. How much out of your hundred thousand are you saying, you know, that's in your fund fifty thousand and we put fifty thousand? So that makes it a hundred thousand or can you?
I could probably go up to sixty at the most. Anything about that I would not be comfortable, but I could do up to sixty if that's as high as the council wanted to go.
Then I I would be willing. To say, you know, that we want to come on, come up with one under one twenty, stay under the one twenty. And hopefully. Under that, but that would be our our max levy that we'd be willing to to expend. So. I'll make my motion with moving forward with presenting the RFPs and setting a stipulation of nothing more than one twenty. That would be my motion.
You have a motion? Is anybody a second? I got a motion. I got a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion or vote?
The only thing I might have on discussion would be is I'm not sure that I wanna necessarily tell.
Yeah, I I agree. I agree. Yeah.
Okay. So all those in favor, signify, raise your hand. All those opposed. They motion carry three to four.
All right, I'll get on it. Thank you. Yeah, they did. That's all I have for you for the rest of the year.
Next thing on the agenda is Leanne.
Hi, okay. Hi, my name's Leanne Wright. I serve as Executive Director for the Community Foundation of Plaski County. Thank you for making the slight adjustment in the agenda this evening to accommodate us. I followed the instructions on the form and I had the wrong form. So thank you. With me tonight is Lindsay Bartz of Roots. Roots Yoga Project. She runs the yoga program in the jail. Last month, I stood before the commissioners. To represent her. She's also a full-time school teacher. And also with Katie Serma to present to the commissioners about the impact of this program. On incarcerated individuals in the in the county jail. At that time, we had requested use of opioid settlement funds to continue the program. And the commissioners voted to approve that, and we are here tonight to answer questions and request that the council. Approve that funding, provided we fill out the right form.
How much is it?
Budget sheet is the very last page, so there's eleven pages.
Page eleven?
Yeah.
And this is about the same amount as last year, actually, I think just a little bit less. So.
It's just a we added in. It's just slightly more and you can see the twenty-four, twenty-five budget on page six. In to. We added in a more sophisticated. Data system. So that we can monitor monitor it a little bit better. We in that we included an additional growth measure. Of PHQ two, which is a screener that you can take from identifying at risk for depression. The numbers that we saw on our initial data system showed that depression was one of the number one feelings that the. Individuals were experiencing. So with the PHQ two, that's something that we worked with. Tim Gerhart on who's a social worker and also if you look on page five, he's one of the. He's highly requested for another modality for trauma healing called moral recognition therapy. So the increase includes not only the more sophisticated data system or a monitoring system, which you can see on page eight and nine. But it also includes an additional trauma modality called trauma and trauma and. Theory, trauma release, trauma intention release therapy. And that modality is based on the research that. The tissues in our body hold on to memories tied to trauma and that trauma then impacts the decision-making that we make. And so the trauma intention, the trauma release therapy, and it's, we're talking like less than a thousand dollars of an increase. And but it's gonna add an additional modality, a six weeks of. That modality integrated into the other types of yoga that they were using. Along with the metacognition strategies for journaling. So that's kind of the reason why the less than a hundred or less than a thousand dollar increase.
Inmates are not causing as much ruckus in the jail. They're not tearing it up. The relationship between the inmates are better. We don't have as many issues. Recidivism is decreasing, so I hope this is a part of that.
If you page five, page five will show you the net savings and it will also show you the percentage of reduction in recidivism since two thousand and twenty-three. It's not just that, I will note though, that's not just the jail. That is also all of the other, it's just the whole curriculum in itself and all of the programming that's going into the jail too. So sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's the the big things that we're seeing in the jail for the correctional officer side and everything. They're they're not bugging as much. These inmates are excited to do this, like they give a huge attendance. If they get in trouble, they don't go to this class and they don't want to be kicked out of the class. So they usually behave for the most part. So I think it's a good thing to continue.
How many days a week is it?
Once a week for, yeah, and we see males and females separately. Another thing that I will add that I think is really important. And I was kind of surprised. Was. Because the recidivism, that's one hundred and fourteen inmates that are going back into the community that haven't come back into the jail. So that number is huge. But from like a like a spiritual standpoint, these individuals were really, really touched to know that a community invested in their well-being. And that was something that was really eye-opening to them. And so they really kind of took. It not for granted that a community like Winamak, a rural community like Winamak invested in their well-being and. Anytime that they come in, I will sometimes kind of make a joke like, oh, you're killing my numbers. Or like, like, just because we tell them that our goal is to keep them out from the community and for them to not come back into here. And so that's kind of just another anecdote about the work that's being done that you guys, you know, isn't on this paper.
So we need a motion to spend opioid money? I'll make a motion.
A second.
Yeah, a motion, a second to. Provide the funding for this opioid money.
I I do have a question.
Yeah.
This is a, this is a program that we that's been supported through the opioid funding. In the past years then, like last year or whatever, or is this a new program that that we're looking to fund through the opioid?
This was funded last year through the opioid settlement dollars. It does align with the Schedule E. So it it fits in with the abatement share requirements that we have to spend on.
Any more discussions? No more vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Everybody voted yes. Motion carried.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have the. Through our twenty twenty-six meeting schedule. We need to entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Brad already did. We second it.
I'll second.
Brad Mason, AJ second. Any discussion on the meeting schedule? No discussion, we'll vote. All those favorite, raise your hand. Motion carried. Now we gotta do the minutes from the. Council meeting eleven ten and the executive session minutes from ten twenty. Entertaining motion for the minutes.
Second motion, they approve it, red.
Your second. Brad second. Any discussion? No discussion will vote. All those in favor to do the minutes. Raise your hand. Motion carried. Everybody voted yes. Now we gotta do the. County matrix ordinance for salaries and wages. Do we wait on that since we just changed the ambulance or we just do it and make a change?
Usually we do it before the end of the year.
We better do it there. Okay. Entertaining motion for that.
I'll make a motion to. Accept the twenty twenty-six matrix, county matrix ordinance and salaries and wages as presented.
I'll second. I got a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion will vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carried. Now we got the twenty twenty-six attorney contract. Entertaining motion.
Did I get an email to us?
It was probably late last week. Because I didn't get it till before the end of the week.
What's what's the total?
I have it.
So for attending the council meetings. He'll have an annual retainer of six thousand dollars. And it's to be paid at the execution of this agreement and then his after the six thousand is used up, then it's two hundred and thirty dollars per hour.
How did that compare? To the past?
So rates higher, the the contingency or the. So rate's higher, the, the contingency or the retainer was the same, but the rate is a little bit higher. I think last, this year's rate was two hundred...
Maybe I wanna make the motion to do the, hire an attorney?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote, all those in favor, raise your hand. Everybody voted yes. Motion carried. Now we need to do transfers. There's a whole list here, we could probably just do them as presented if you...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept all the transfers as presented. I'll second it.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carried. Don't look like we have any additionals?
You have the advertised additionals.
Yeah, but not, not three, okay, number four.
No, because it's too late.
Yeah.
Because you won't have them done by the end of this year to have an advertised.
So we discussed the veteran service officer last meeting, and the sheriff had that, the ones that he discussed, and the drainage board for the board members. We could do all them for you, you got it, you got one or two?
I'll make a motion for advertised additionals.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion, vote, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Motion carried, everybody voted yes. Now we have any discussion?
Back to the veteran service officer, I did talk with Teresa about this. And it is because of the pay raise, and it wasn't caught in this year's budget because we've never had anybody stick around. And I did ask to meet with him on, on his budget, and I made a phone call because I was his go-to. And he said he had it all taken care of, but from what we've found, he probably doesn't have enough money next year either.
No, he doesn't.
So we're gonna have to make additionals for that later on too.
Yeah. That's okay. Is there any public comment? No public comment, anybody else gonna have? Close out, find yourself? Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Yeah, I got a motion and a second. Brad second, thank. All those in favor, any discussion, raise your hand, vote yes. Anybody vote? Meeting closed.